We call this meeting, the Board of Alderman and Order, rise and raise your flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stephen Gorman, I mean, Gorman would be late, so I figured that extra time by switching gears.
Now we're good for full call.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Here.
Alderman Mackley? Alderman Rogers?
Here.
Alderman Borraff here, Alderman Wilken?
Present. Do you have a quorum, so your business can take place? Item three is consent agenda. It's in your packet. Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Yes?
I let, uh, on the meeting minutes for June sixth, I let everyone into pledge allegiance, but I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Okay.
May I be correct, please?
Did you want to be there? Need other additions or corrections?
It's actually, it's only actually. I was on purpose.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the edits that the mayor has brought in.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the consent agenda with noted corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, accounts payable over $1,250, in a total amount of $331,737.81.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve accounts payable over $1,250, in a total amount of $331,737.81.
I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable over $1,250, in a total amount of
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve accounts payable over $1,250, in a total amount of $331,737.81. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries two. Item five, comments from citizens. Do you have any comments? Anybody would like to make a comment, yourself? Sure, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cherie Tolson Rice, and I'm here to introduce myself, and I'm running for statehouse seat of District 44. That includes Hallsville, Centrelia, Sturgeon, and Clark, in the northeast quarter of Columbia. I like to say with the geographic area of District 44 that Hallsville is the center of the universe, but the truth of the matter is, Centrelia is, because you all literally anchor northern Boone County. And although it is now called Hubble, I'm old school and still call it AV Chance. So, I was telling Jim before the meeting started, I was at the Battlefield BBQ Saturday night, and I got four out of 10 questions on Centrelia, right? The population, the elevation, Chetol, because that stands for Chance and Tolson, my maiden name, and Jack Chance, and I have a genealogy where we actually intersect and are related. What I'm here tonight is to briefly tell you that I'm here to run for Caleb Rowden's current seat, and the focus of my platform is going to be education. My family is a founding family of university in 1839. I'm sixth generation Boone Countyan. We came here in 1815, before Missouri was a state. Also, my number one priority is jobs, and as the largest employer in northern Boone County is Hubble, I've been on the Ready Board, Regional Economic Development, similar to your old's credit board, for over 20 years. And so, my goal, if I'm elected to the state, is to grow, expand, and attract jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other citizens, I want to see if they have a comment. I'll close that section. Moving to the action agenda. Finance, there's nothing listed, is that still correct? Prevent some licensing, licensing is still nothing?
Correct.
Legal. Item one, vacating. Fully releasing several easements related to Clark and Hyman Edition of the law of ordinance. Would you like to comment on that?
Certainly. The, in your packet, the ordinance that you find that drafted by Mr. Beck. The purpose of this is, the next item on the agenda is approving the final plat of DG plat one. In the, in the course of the investigation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and by Mr. Frankenberger, and their, their work to prepare the plat, it's discovered that there's a number of easements. Some of them were, some of them were poorly drafted, and some of them were just no longer necessary. There were some easements between property owners, and if I can get, might as well just go ahead and get this up on the screen. Well, I'll try and talk while I'm getting this up on the screen. The, um, okay. The plat, the, among the, among the settings, oh, it would help if it was plugged in. Much, make a really big difference. Among the easements you find here on this, on this plat, were a couple of easements here between the different property owners. And, zoom it in. This is, for instance, this ingress and egress easement from Tom and Susan Bish. This, this was a way to get to the, this part of the property from Highway 22, and it is no longer, it serves, no, no longer serves a purpose because it's all under common ownership. I believe in Mark, who did the survey, and is here, could tell you that some of these easements on the eastern edge of the property were, were not described in such a way that they could actually be located on the map. And then there were a couple that were, there were, there was a couple others that just were no, no longer served the purpose as well. So, the purpose of this ordinance is to, by ordinance, wipe out any easements that were previously donated to the city, which will be replaced if, with the passage of the next bill. Where, which, where there are easements described that we would need to serve this law. Are there any questions?
I don't know if there's any more questions. Tom, if you have any suggestions.
Sure. Bill number, please.
Twenty-eight ten.
I move that bill number twenty-eight ten be adopted by, our, I approve that bill number twenty-eight ten, uh, there we go. Yeah, be given its first read by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-eight ten be given its first read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centrelia, Missouri, to execute the full release of easements. I move that bill twenty-eight ten be adopted, or be, give it its second read by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight ten be given its second read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centrelia, Missouri, to execute the full release of easements. Now I move that bill number twenty-eight ten be adopted by role call.
Second. I have a motion to, bill number twenty-eight ten be adopted by role call, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alderman Lee?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borraff?
Yes.
Alderman Wilken?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
By your vote, bill number twenty-eight ten passes and becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-eight fifty-nine.
Okay. Item two, under legal, is approving the final plat of DG plat number one subdivision, minor subdivision, accepting easements and ordinance.
Brief memo in the packet after the picture of the map, or the, the physical plot. The, basically, that's, it includes a discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission. A couple of requests were made for changes, but they're minor ones. The original, well, very first version that Mark sent us was Dollar General plat one, but it is in our code that says you're not supposed to put a name of a business as your, name of your plat, so we changed it to DG, it was DG Edition, but since it's not typically, it's not technically an addition, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we asked that they just change it to DG plat one, and they've done that. We also asked that the notation be made on the easements, and that has been done. Some other technical things, like they've added a monument to, to set the elevation. They've made some minor modifications to make sure that the, the plat has the right names of the planning and zoning chair, et cetera. And I believe, although there are a lot of words on there, and we, myself and Merritt have looked at it, I believe that we are, it is ready tonight to be approved. If somebody finds something that's very small, I would appreciate it if we could approve it with conditional, condition on fixing in a minor technical glitch. I don't know that there are any, I'm just leaving that open as a possibility because I'm not sure. And Mark Frankenberger is here from BFA Engineering, which did the, did all the surveying for the site. Can you answer any questions, or give you a quick introduction to the project if you would like?
Good evening, I'm Mark Frankenberger from Bishop Frankenberger. If I have any question, I'd be happy to address them. I noticed they haven't started building yet, but it has been staked out.
Where are the new easements?
We're putting one, the crosshatch area coming off of 22 is to service the lot two, which was the old side south saloon, and then we're running that easement along 22 and then down 124 for the city utilities. There's, there's 24 went up along 22, but then we extended it along 124, utility easement, and we extend one along the south side for the city to put utilities in now or in the future. Yeah, that's a new one there for the plat, and then one along the south side is a new one.
There, I think there was an attempt to have one, actually, the south side, there wasn't any.
There, there was an attempt, we think, to the one we're vacating right there, but it didn't really work, and actually, it ran through the middle of the housing buildings to the east, so that's why we went with the ordinance to vacate that portion on this plat.
Where is that big plant that burrows in there?
It's just right along the eastern property line. No, it's actually about the middle of the building, ain't it?
Uh, it starts south of the building, but it's, it runs along that, and then it runs along South Line a little bit too, doesn't it?
Yep, yep. And right now, we're only working on lot one. We were hired to do the engineering on lot one, and I apologize, I have no idea what can go on lot two, or what will go.
And I, yeah, I don't, I don't know for certain, I'm sure it's some sort of retail, but we don't have a, we have no building permit requesting. We do have a building permit that is approved of the, and the engineered plans, stamp plans have been approved, and they could be building today on lot one, which is where the new Dollar General will go. So, they're just, I guess they're waiting for this process to finish before they move forward.
I know we were asked to stay a two weeks ago, and of course, we stayed different, so I don't.
If it stays, if it stays, it won't do anything.
Yeah, after this process, I'm pretty well done, especially as well, and will supply the city of other county as well, so.
And they, and one of the things that the, they did not at any time ask for additional access onto Highway 22, which would have been a bad, if not dangerous, idea. Therefore, the easement, there, there will be an easement here so that lot one can access Highway 22 via this easement, which is actually part of lot two. They also have not precluded O'Reilly's, O'Reilly's, or who'll be the property owner of this property here, from using that easement, although they have their own entrance and exit here, they, they, that is not being, this, this allows that.
I guess it no doubt wouldn't have allowed an entrance for it to be less than this at all.
I doubt they would have.
They don't want to get rid of the O'Reilly's entrance, I think, just because it's another entrance. And if something does happen at this entrance, they can still travel across the O'Reilly's to the east with emergency vehicles or whatever it needs to be.
I suspect it's good enough for what we've got, but a fire hydrant is not benchmarked in the wrong, they could.
We didn't have a lot of time.
Anytime you turn the water, run water through them, they will change the elevation slightly.
We can set something the next time we come up.
I wouldn't worry about it, we've done by that time.
They just hide into the, uh, take plane coordination system, so. Nowadays, getting a surveyor to use anything but a GPS is going to be hard to do.
Any other comments or questions? If not, it is a bill, requires two readings.
Thank you, Mark.
David, would you have a question?
Twenty-eight eleven.
I move that bill twenty-eight one-one be given its first read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight eleven be given its first read by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And ordinance approving the final plat of DG plat one subdivision, a minor subdivision of a portion of the southwest quarter of the section ten, township fifty-one north, range eleven west, in the city of Centrelia, Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the city of Centrelia, Missouri, of the utility easements and other easements in said plat as the public property of the city of Centrelia, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-eight one-one be given its second read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight one-one be given its second read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And ordinance approving the final plat of DG plat one subdivision, a minor subdivision of a portion of the southwest quarter of section ten, township fifty-one north, range eleven west, in the city of Centrelia, Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the city of Centrelia, Missouri, of the utility easements and other easements in said plat as the public property of the city of Centrelia, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-eight one-one be adopted by role call vote.
I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight one-one be adopted by role call vote.
Aye.
Role call, have a please.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borraff?
Yes.
Alderman Wilken?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes. By your vote, bill number twenty-eight eleven passes, ordinance number?
Twenty-eight sixty.
Thank you. Item number three, under legal, thank you. Take care, sir. Is authorizing the mayor and the city of, the mayor of the city of Centrelia to execute a lease agreement with Landis Gyr Technology Incorporated of Oberlin, Missouri, permission to attach equipment to the city of Centrelia, Missouri utility. Comment on that one?
Depending upon how good your memory is, you will recognize this as being the third time we've looked at this. The reason for, the first time, the company changed its name, so we redid it with the new name of the company. This time, we're altering the contract such that the locations where the collector devices, and remember, this is, Liges Gear is a subcontractor for Ameren Gas. These six boxes are already hanging on our utility poles. They collect data from the remote read gas meters and then send that off to Ameren for billing. Originally, we, they brought forth five locations, and one was, they actually put it in the wrong place, we had to move it, but they, they found out that they needed a sixth location to get full coverage, and we added it, but the contract had the exact locations in the main document. So, that, we would have had to have redone them anyway, but in this version, as you will see, the con, the last page of the contract is attachment, and all we have to do is attach, change Exhibit A of the attachment to add or subtract or move a device, if necessary. There is an escape clause in there, for some reason, the city no longer wants to be a host to their boxes, but it's no harm to us, a small amount, about 600 bucks a year. Basically, it makes it easier for our residents to get their, their gas when they're ready. So, staff would recommend approval of the ordinance.
Any else have a comment? Not? Andrew, would you introduce this one?
Yeah, bill number?
Twenty-eight twelve.
I need that bill number twenty-eight twelve be given its first read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight twelve be given its first read by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centrelia, Missouri, to execute a lease agreement with Landis plus Gyr Technology, Inc. of Oberlin, Missouri, for permission to attach equipment to city of Centrelia, Missouri utility poles. I need that bill number twenty-eight twelve be given its second read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight twelve be given its second read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centrelia, Missouri, to execute a lease agreement with Landis plus Gyr Technology, Inc. of Oberlin, Missouri, for permission to attach equipment to the city of Centrelia, Missouri utility poles. I need that bill number twenty-eight twelve be adopted by role call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second, bill number twenty-eight twelve be adopted by role call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Role call vote, please, sir.
Alderman Borraff?
Yes.
Alderman Wilken?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
By your vote, bill number twenty-eight twelve becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-eight sixty-one.
Thank you. De-purchasing, says none. Any business, none? New business. Tim, you want me to make these appointments for you?
Tim?
Say it again?
There's four appointments to the library board. You want me to make them for you?
Okay.
Okay. The mayor would like to appoint Angie Taylor. Should I do these individually, or is it?
Why should you do the three that are full terms, and then the, the one that's partial?
Are there any reappointments? Are these all new appointments?
These are all new appointments. Did he email? Uh, we had Jack Meyer at the last meeting talking about them. I didn't know that, I figured that covered it. I asked if anybody had any questions about it. It's the same name, sorry. The, Angie Taylor, Julie, three of them would be full terms, that would go through June of, June 30th of 2019, and then the final appointment would be to complete the unexpired term of Jenny Eppenscheid, whose term would end June 30th, 2018. But yes, David, usually I do send you something, I just.
I just, yeah, I just don't remember.
So, we would like to appoint Angie Taylor, Julie Riker, and Terry Hamilton, full terms to the library board to expire June 30th of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second to accept the mayor's appointments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, there's three appointments, and then I would also like to appoint Arona Brando to the unexpired term to replace Jenny Eppenscheid, which would be a June 30 expiration of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to accept the mayor's appointment of Arona Brando. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, Jen.
Thank you very much, man.
Any other? Yeah, there's no other mayors. City administrator?
Copy of my monthly reports in the packet. In addition, I would like to, we've talked in the past a little bit about the idea of going out for a, sending out a request proposal for trash service. I'm not asking you to make any decision tonight. We are in a unique position right now, where our staffing is such that if we were going to go take a look, now would be the time. And we have recently, a, a, a full-time employee leave service with us, and yet the other full-time member of the, solely refused, has, has let us know that he's planning to retire. In addition, if you remember, three years ago, we had a fire in our trash trucks, actually. We replaced the newer model, so it would be time, it's time to look at replacing, you know, getting, the older truck would have been replaced before, but we held on to it because we had to replace the newer truck after the fire. So, we would be looking at purchasing a trash truck in the next budget. So, if there's ever a time to look at this process, you know, based on where we, based on our immediate condition, this would be the time, but it takes a significant amount of staff time to put together an RFP like that, especially if we want to put a city bid in as well, which I would recommend. Lynn has been a staunch supporter of keeping trash service in-house, and I am philosophically of the same kind of thinking, that if we can do it ourselves, we should, but it is, we have a two-truck fleet for trash pickup. Other companies have, they lost two trucks in one day, they would still have the capacity to easily pick up trash that day, we do not. So, it's just, I'm not, if you guys say no, we'll move forward, we'll get, prepare this next budget with a new truck, and we'll go immediately out and hire a replacement for the one person, and then prepare to hire a second person in the fall. But, is there any interest in taking a look at that? And we could, you could say yes. And we could, you could say yes, we could say no, we could say, let's think about it until July fifth, but that's the next meeting of Public Works and Public Safety, or, uh, Public Works and Public Utilities, so, and it's Tuesday, by the way. So, anyway, uh, that, we had the, we had an unexpected person, it was, we are, we did not expect that person to leave our, our service.
Well, that's everybody's preference on that.
We couldn't just do trash at cost, right? Like, did we make any revenue off of it?
We try and put aside enough to cover future capital costs. Uh, we would, if we, if we, if we went to a full farming out the trash service, um, we would still have to charge the bills through our department, because we, first of all, we need to cover administrative costs, and second of all, we need to cover, make sure that we have adequate reserve on the, um, uh, our economic insurance instrument, basically that, that we can cover the, the, uh, costs of closing, post-closure of our landfill. So there would, and then you...
The overall cost then?
Yes, and if we want, if we wanted to keep recycling in-house, we, we need to have something to cover that cost as well. So, um, and that would be how I would probably suggest drafting this. Is there any interest in pursuing this at all, or bringing back sort of a, something of a proposal on July fifth, or just keep going as we're going? And, and if you want to wait, if you, if this is... I, I, I feel obligated to at least bring it up tonight.
I guess my personal feeling is there's, there's no harm in looking at it, but you don't have to make a decision till you have something to look at.
I, I, this is not my, this is not the timing that I had in mind for going to do it, but, okay.
Can you throw some comparisons, really simple, one-page thing, kind of give us something for...
I'll do what I can.
Just, you know, just kind of a...
I can at least give you scenarios that we could pursue.
That's all we need, I think, something we can just kind of think what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Sit a little down.
Right. We can, we can...
No detail, just a...
Gotcha.
You agree?
Hey, Matt?
Yes, Tim.
Is, uh, is that something we can, uh, request a grant through from the, the Missouri Holloway Management District?
No, 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 the, one of the things they cannot do is give money towards actual trash collection.
Okay.
That is a strictly verboten, and, you know, only for waste of...
That's all right, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's okay, it's a, it was a, it's a good question, just the answer is no.
Have, have been told that before.
Yeah, no, well, you, yeah, I mean, it's important that that's, that that is known.
Mr. Lee, I have a question.
Sure. If, if you, if you switched gears, went with another company, what would your, what would your best, easiest date to do that? I mean, would you be looking at, for, for you, for city, for budget, at the end of this budget year, or would you pull the trigger on it sooner based on what you could get?
Sooner, sooner, I would, I would be looking at, I mean, it's going to take some transition time, but I think fall, late, early winter, if we're going to pursue it this way.
Does Jamie plan on retiring?
His date is in October. Is that, is that right? I don't know.
I believe so.
Is that something I can, can I say that on? I don't know if that's, anyway, yeah.
I think he's not hard, I figured out he was going to retire.
I don't, I heard at the barber shop, I'm sure he wasn't part of the hunt, so I...
I understand, this is, this is...
Hard to see.
And four hundred, four thousand one hundred seventy-five people could know, but it's another thing, put it in the minutes, and the, the... But, but he's made, he's, he's, yeah.
Are you sure about it?
Could I bribe him to stay another week? I don't know, but...
That option?
That's, yes, that, so, the staff would like me to put together a couple of scenarios for the July fifth meeting, is what I understand.
Anything else?
No, that is it, and I, you know, I don't like springing something on you like that, but it happened this last week, so...
Merritt, do you have anything?
No.
Other?
No.
There's planning zoning meeting this, this week.
That's right. Planning zoning this week with...
Thursday. Thursday, six.
It's thunder now, if that helps anybody to hurry along.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
The motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post.